Okay, well, we got one more to come.
Yeah, I, yeah, you can't count.
I can't count to seven, you're right, okay. We got quorum.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and get going. I will be leading the first work session on the legislative program. So, let's go ahead and hand it over to Marty and Michael, who will go through the full report from what was first presented last Thursday, and then we'll take board questions.
Mr. McAlpine, I just want to make you aware, I did the pre-meeting with Mr. Malloy since you were traveling, and we are going to be doing a federal component for which I'm the liaison. So when you're done with state, we do want to do federal too.
Should we, Megan, then, how do you want to do that? Should we just have it presented together and then take questions on the whole thing?
Oh, of course, absolutely. Just wanted to make sure you knew there was going to be two pieces.
Yeah, sure. So, we are happy to discuss all of that today. We've taken some direction from the meeting on Thursday and have incorporated those changes into our work today. And so we're looking forward for a very robust discussion around the legislative program. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Michael. And I know that we have had some conversations with board members about amendments, and so we'll talk about that aspect as well, and then answer any questions that you might have going into the vote at our next meeting. So, Michael, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. So, on Thursday night, as you know, I walked, kind of walked you through the basic presentation of the proposed changes to the legislative program. What was posted this morning were documents that were in response to, primarily to board member requests and to some issues that had come up at that Thursday meeting. So, the three additional documents that you now have as part of this agenda item, one is a document which lists five separate issues that had come up in terms of possible amendments that the board may wish to consider. So, amendments on environmental sustainability, on the avid elective, on the step-up handle with care issue, on June primary election date, and on directory information opt-outs. So, there's some proposed language for each one of those for your discussion. And then, in addition, every year you all adopt a set of priority positions. And what I've done is I've taken and tried to redraft your 2018 version and updated for 2019, streamlining it a little bit to try and pull down the focus of the positions a little bit more than your previous version. And then also, creating a separate federal priority position for the board to consider. So, right now, as the way your legislative program is structured is the federal positions are essentially the end, just at the end, of the full document. What this would do is this would essentially give that federal section of your program its own set of priorities and then follow on with the positions that you already have adopted. So, those are the three documents that you're seeing this morning. And again, as I said, based primarily on requests from various board members and discussions on Thursday, and happy to discuss.
Okay, any questions? I know Pat had sent some things in, I'm sure others had had a potential amendment, so this is a time to bring those forward. Megan?
I guess, Michael, one of the things we talked about the pre-meeting, and I'm disappointed Scott Brabran's not here, so maybe it's for Francis. Perfect timing! And then also keeping in mind that for the public, who doesn't want to necessarily have to tune in to the Thursday night meeting in order to understand what we're talking about in today's work session, I do think that we might need just a little more, if nothing else, putting something up on the screen so the public's trying to figure out what it is we're actually doing here. But Dr. Brabran, what I share with Mr. Malloy is that, on the page one of the priority language, our clerk can pull that up, the document that says priority language. Mr. Malloy was referencing, it says, yeah, it's not that one. It says 2019 priority positions.
Yeah, what you have up right now is the federal version of it.
Yeah, we need the state one.
So, the state version.
And we should change, I'm looking at the hard copy of that one, and we'll want to make sure it says state priority positions then, since it's about state funding.
There we go. Yep, that's it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to walk through it if you all would like me to in terms of the positions that are there, or?
Yeah, I think that would help set the stage for the discussion because that is a big piece of what we're doing in the work session today is where we, are we as a board saying these are our priorities? So, if you can walk through it, and then Dr. Brabran, as I said, Thursday night as well, I want to know what the division has to say about these priorities. Because you all, are they supposed to be the subject matter experts on operations? So, we're the public body and the voice to our general assembly, but I want a little more context and understanding on how we arrived at these bullet priorities. And I would just say the first one, I think it's going, the first two will need some clarity. Because unless people really understand what's behind it, the term, the language there on the first two bullets, I think, is a bit unclear.
Okay, so, in terms of the priority position draft, really, the structure of it focuses on kind of two components. One is state funding, and the second is flexibility, is flexibility in terms of state mandates. That's really kind of the guiding principle for all the positions that you're going to find under the board priorities. So, that's just in general, the language at the top gets to that funding and flexibility paradigm. And then below it, what you have is you have some issues which are issues that are either perennial issues in the general assembly or ones that have a particular impact on FCPS that I think we're interested in trying to pursue as priorities. So, there are six. The first four really are focused in on the funding side of the ledger, and then the second two are focused more in on the flexibility side.
And let me just add before you go into it more. You know, there's a consistent desire of this board to really streamline these priorities. Remember, last year, there were two pages. This year, we've shrunk it even further, and we've put all of them together. We've reduced it to six. Obviously, the board can talk about whether they want to include all of these or want to add to this, but I do, this is certainly Michael's best effort at streamlining, so.
And to share, I'm glad Michael started. But, Michael, on some of these, those first four that are funding, we probably have dollar values that we could attach. And I don't know if we have them today. Like, I think the arbitrary cap on support, that's a lot of money when that was done. I mean, that may help the board if they wish to go from six to an even narrower group by just knowing for the four funding what that stacks up with in terms of dollars to Fairfax County Public Schools.
Yeah, we can pull the most recent estimates in terms of the impacts that each one of these has.
Right, and that might help with what Ms. McGlaughlin is talking about. Which of those four would be our number one? And of the two, on flexibility, which one? And again, part of that, I think, on the funding, I would go based on the one that has the highest impact to Fairfax County Public Schools in terms of dollars we could retain. On the two around flexibility, oh my gosh, those two, frankly, Michael and I didn't have that discussion. Both are important to me. I think I'd want to hear to the board whether we would pick one or the other, per se.
We don't need to pick from them, we can keep them.
It's one pager, you get all of them.
Even better. All right, so, in terms of the positions that are listed here, so I'll walk, I'll kind of give you the thumbnail sketch of all six of them and kind of why they're important. The first one goes back to something that the general assembly and Virginia government did back in, I believe it was 2009 during the Kane administration. As you remember, back in 2009, you were fairly deep in the recession. The state was looking for ways to reduce the burden on the state's coffers. What they did at the time was they essentially imposed a cap on the amount of funding that the state was going to provide for support positions. And support positions are essentially anything that's not, you know, not directly related to instruction. So, school social workers would be an example of a support position, or school bus driver.
Psychologists, social workers.
Right, so those positions, the way they were funded prior to the cap is the state would do what was called funded based on prevailing practice. So, they'd look at what everybody in the Commonwealth did in terms of staffing, and they would base their funding on a formula that took into account the number of actual personnel that jurisdictions had and the actual salaries that they paid to those personnel. When they put the cap in place, they said, "That's fine, except for we're not going to allow you to, we're not going to have the state contribute funding for positions, for support positions." And I believe the ratio at the time was one support position for every 4.03 instructional positions. And that sounds really technical and really well thought out. Honestly, at the time, that was the number that they needed to use to get to the budget savings that they were looking for in 2009. It wasn't really based on theory. It wasn't based on a discussion of what's the appropriate ratio of staffing or anything like that. It was simply kind of a mechanical way of getting them to the budget savings that they needed to be at. Now, of course, you know, 2009 is fairly far in the rearview mirror. However, that support cap has remained. At the time, and I'm going to totally guess on this, but at the time, I remember about $20 to $30 million impact on Fairfax in terms of that imposition of that support cap and in terms of the reduction of state funding that we were receiving for those positions compared to years prior to the cap being in place. So, it is, it's a bit of a technical issue, but it's one that is fairly well-known in Richmond. And people understand when you refer to the support cap what you're talking about in terms of that kind of artificial limitation on how the state reimburses localities for what they're doing. So, it really gets to that issue of the imbalance between what you all are doing here on the ground and what the state is willing to recognize as what localities are doing. And because of that mismatch, the state, we would argue, underfunds you all as supposedly a partner in terms of providing a public education. So, that's really where that first support cap position comes from. Second position I know has been a huge priority locally, and it's also a priority at the state level. It deals with instructional and support position salaries. The reason that it's worded this way is because there is actually a pretty significant difference between the dollar amount that the state plugs in when they determine how much localities pay for salaries versus what you actually pay for salaries here. There's a pretty wide divergence between, again, what the state recognizes versus what localities actually do. So, when the state puts in, you know, when the state recommends a percentage increase for salaries, and they provide funding for that, that funding ends up being not only a fraction of the amount that it's going to cost you all as a board because of the way the formulas work and adjustments for cost of living and adjustments for the local composite index. But it actually costs you even above and beyond that because your salaries are above what the state even recognizes. So, right off the bat, you're paying additional funding at the local level for that salary percentage increase because there's this mismatch between state salary and what you're paying at the local level. The next issue gets to a chart that we update every year. We put it out for the last three or four years, which really kind of gets to the difference between how you look at a school division in terms of its special needs populations. So, students in poverty, English language learners, students receiving special education services. Because Fairfax is the size that it is, you are considered a relatively low percentage jurisdiction in terms of those populations. So, when you look at the number of students that receive those services versus the total number of students in the jurisdiction, you end up low in the rankings of that on a percentage basis. But when you look at the actual numbers of students that are receiving those services and the number of students that have the additional, you know, possible resource allocations, our special needs populations in isolation are among the top 10 biggest jurisdictions in all of Virginia. So, they would all rank among the top 10. So, our special needs population is about equivalent to the special, or the entire population of, say, Henrico County. So, there's a huge difference between if the state funds on the basis of percentage of these populations versus actually funding on a per-student basis or on a per-head basis. And this is, this position's really trying to get you to that distinction so that the state recognizes those significant pockets of need. And it's also, it's not just a division-wide percentage issue. It's also a local percentage issue and a local school issue. We have individual schools that would rank among the top in terms of free and reduced lunch, but they're individual schools. So, again, they're isolated, and they're kind of washed out by the entirety of the Fairfax population. So, that kind of gets to both of those pieces. And then the last one, again, is a bit of a term of art because it's a term that's used in Richmond. The cost of competing adjustment is an adjustment that's placed into the budget that basically is a small increment of additional funding for Northern Virginia localities, and that's Fairfax, Prince William, Loudon, Arlington, Alexandria, Manassas, Manassas Park, Fairfax City, forgetting someone, Falls Church. So, those jurisdictions actually get a small increment of additional funding to adjust. It's not really a cost of living, but it functions like a cost of living adjustment. It says that the wage market here is so much different than elsewhere in the state that the wages you have to pay in order to be able to attract personnel here have to be higher. So, this is the state's way of adjusting that. Now, in one of life's cruel ironies, the cost of competing adjustment is actually applied before the LCI is applied. So, the cost of competing adjustment is adjusted by the local composite index, which is a measure of local wealth and local ability to pay. But the cost of competing, it's been looked at by the state's kind of legislative research arm, J-LARK. It's been looked at multiple times, and not only have they endorsed the concept, but they've also said that the percentages are probably too low based on what the actual wage structure is here in Northern Virginia. A number of years ago, I believe it was during the McDonnell administration, cost of competing for support positions was actually eliminated entirely. Over time, it's come back, but it's only come back to about half the level that it was prior to those cuts. So, there's still some work to be done to get us back to the level on the support position side. Now, thankfully, the instructional position side, they've kind of kept, they haven't talked about that, they haven't messed with that percentage, but they did definitely talk about it on the support, on the support side. And it was in conjunction with the support position cap. That's really when the, this issue kind of arose. So, those are the four funding pieces that we've identified. And then in terms of the two flexibility pieces, one is, you know, obviously, everybody is very familiar with the state's prohibition on starting prior to Labor Day. So, that's the first one in terms of local flexibility, is just to tell localities that they can make their own decisions on calendar issues based on what their local priorities are. And that might mean that there are jurisdictions that decide that it's better for their jurisdiction to start their schools after Labor Day, and that would be fine. But this is just saying to leave that decision as to whether or not to start before Labor Day or after Labor Day to localities and not rely on, you know, the vagaries of weather or not rely on other kinds of waivers. And then the second, the second piece on the flexibility side really has to do with, I think, your stated goals of reducing the impact of mandated testing on students, on teachers, and on the classroom. The state has moved more towards things like performance-based assessments and some other, and reductions in the number of verified credits. And if you remember, verified credits are actually attached to a student's performance on a state-standardized test. So, there have been some flexibilities given to localities, but there's also been some pushback. There was language put into the budget this past session, which actually prohibited the use of performance-based assessments for social studies. Now, that's in the budget, and that language, in theory, comes out when the next budget comes out and is reamended. But at least for now, we've had kind of a prohibition on being able to use those performance-based assessments in a particular, in a particular subject area. So, that's the listing of proposed board priorities in a nutshell in terms of how they relate to the funding issue and how they relate to the flexibility issue.
Okay, great, thanks for that overview, and to Megan. And I'll hand it back to Megan in a second. The one proposal I would make, and this is just me, but because of how critical it is, how critical the Labor Day issue is this year, I would propose moving those last two up to the top to be funded by, followed by the funding. Okay, so, let's go with Megan, then Pat, then Illyon.
So, I guess I would say, Michael, after walking through that, my first question is, that first bullet, the elimination of the arbitrary cap for support positions. You know, support positions is a very large category of positions, correct?
Yes.
And one of the things that this board has talked about for many years now is in the changing demographics and challenges that Fairfax County is facing, meeting the needs of the whole child, increases in poverty, that trying to get more psychologists and social workers and school nurses into our schools, for years now, there's been bipartisan interest, even in the general assembly, to get those three positions moved out of support position categorization and have them moved over to the SOQs. So, when I look at this bullet point listing of the four, and I think you did a great job walking through the details, but I almost would like us to be, A, a little more clear for, because this isn't just about what might be understood down at the general assembly, it's the public and the public's voice coming behind these, as well as board members, where we don't live down in the general assembly. And so, when I have my state delegate coming to me and saying, "Megan, what do you want me to push for? What is it the schools need?", these feel a little too generalized. So, I would like at some point, whether we can talk about it today or not, why not take that first bullet and, you know, try to be either a little more specific about what we'd want in the 2019 out of that bullet? Number two, whether we would add a bullet then that is more specific about those three positions and the SOQs. And number three, I'd like to understand, why aren't we, as a division, where we make up 14% of the Virginia population? One in seven Virginians live in Fairfax County, and yet, we aren't actually even bringing draft legislative language saying, "It's not just these categories we care about. We're saying, we want this change happening in the 2019 general assembly" that they understand and coalesce around. And then, I guess, the other point I would make is, if we do an annual crosswalk with the VSBA, the Virginia Superintendent's Association, the VEA, and allow that to be that power of the collective voice and saying, "We're all saying, whether it's things like the cost of compete has got to be fixed. It's really hurting places like Northern Virginia." Maybe then, this won't just seem like it's the opinion of just our school system in isolation. So, I know I've thrown a lot out there, but I just, I'd like for us to kind of maybe see how we can improve on our work to date and being a little more strategic and targeted when the general assembly occurs each year. These just feel a little too high-level. And I will just close by saying, especially the three, first three bullets, you did a great job describing them. I'd like to understand why we don't have that specificity in the bullets. Especially the third one where you gave the description about how we're going to help our high concentrations of poverty, English learners and students receiving special ed. I mean, that's a great thing, but when it says "funding, support", I don't necessarily even know how you would draft legislation. Funding, support, in what way? So, I say this as much to my colleagues, too. We need to say what we mean.
Okay, next, you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to speak to all of those. In terms of that first position on the arbitrary cap, the way it's worded is kind of, it's a two-parter in some ways. Is it's, you know, the overall advocacy is for elimination of the support cap. Should that be a bridge too far? Because, you know, that could be $300, $400 million for the state. That could be a huge impact on the state. Should that be too much? Then kind of what that second piece was getting at, I think, was a more general version of the specifics that you were talking about, which is to prioritize those positions that have kind of direct student service component to them, which would be school psychologists and school social workers. Now, nurses, I think, are treated differently. I don't believe that nurses fall under the support cap. They're not considered SOQ, but I think school nurses are funded based still on prevailing practice and not on, and not, they don't fall under the cap. So, they're kind of in a different position. School psychologists and school social workers definitely are under that cap. So, they would be ones that you'd want to identify specifically as being affected by the cap. But nurses, I don't think are.
I know that there has been prior legislation, I think it was Vivian Watson, Tim Rust, who, or Tom Rust, or whatever his first name was, Tom Rust, that had, they come together in a bipartisan effort. And then there was another gentleman, I think you're aware of, who is also in the area, another, who's no longer in the general assembly. But, I mean, they were looking at targeting those three positions. So, you're correct about how the state defines the use of school nurses in public schools right now. But there was legislation where they were trying to take those three positions, and regardless of where they were categorized, move them into SOQs, saying, "These are three essential positions that need to be treated in the SOQ category." And all three of them sit outside of the SOQ right now, as you just stated. So, I'm not saying that nurses are in support positions. I am saying, "They're outside of the SOQ, and we need them moved into SOQ." I would just say to your point, even if this is not the year to tackle school nurses component versus the psychologists and social workers, I think we need to, as a, as a school division, think about being more specific about what support positions in that Part II you're talking about. I don't want to necessarily go after something that's 300 to 400 million, and that's just completely, you know, your wish list that will never happen. I'd like us to be actually advocating for something that is doable. It's within the budget forecast. And if that is something like Part II of that, I'd almost say, why aren't we, we can still keep the macro bullet, but separate out that second part, make its own standalone bullet, and as Dr. Brabran had said- make its own standalone bullet, and as Dr. Bravran had said, put the dollar values on it, so even our General Assembly counterparts understand which of these bullets they might be willing to go after based on the budget forecast. Because if they don't know what this costs, and they actually don't, with specificity what is we want, it, it just gets overlooked and we don't, we don't actually move the ball.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Pat, then Ilya.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael, once again. This is very, very helpful for us heading into the season, right?
Exactly.
Most of my questions are about the environmental sustainability issue, and so thank you for bringing that to us. But I did just have one question about our priorities list, and another thing, I think maybe the public and our legislators, particularly any new ones, might be helped to know, of the four funding positions that we have, which ones of those would you say create a winners, losers situation down in the General Assembly? In other words, if we push for them here, they can only happen if other jurisdictions in Virginia lose.
Zero sum.
I'm, I'm not sure that they're necess, that any of the four are directly zero sum, but what's impacted is how the funding is allocated. Cost of competing, I, I would say, would be the most, in terms of when you walk into Richmond, that's the most problematic, because the jurisdictions that I listed are the only ones that benefit from that, no one else does. That, so the, the funding that would come as part of the cost of competing adjustment would only go to the Northern Virginia jurisdictions, it wouldn't flow to anybody else. In terms of the additional funding support targeted to, to the, the very special needs populations, the assumption would be that would be additional funding provided above and beyond what's already there. In terms of the allocation that's already there, it does focus more on percentages. So in theory, jurisdictions that have a higher percentage division-wide might get less funding than they otherwise would had they kept the methodology entirely focused in on percentages. So it's not, as I said, it's not necessarily a zero sum, but it does change who would benefit more and who would not benefit as much from the various allocations. Now, in terms of the, the salary issue and also the cap on, on support, or the, the support cap, those would benefit everyone. I mean, those would be a direct benefit from everyone. And the, the other thing about the support position cap is that's actually funding that you already have allocated 100% locally. If you were to eliminate the support cap, that would start to regenerate state dollars for some of those things that you've already prioritized, which would free up local funding in order to be able to pursue other pursuits, right? So you, you, that one is kind of the rare win-win for everyone, because they're things you're already doing, and, but you've already taken that cost on 100% locally.
Right, thank you, yeah. So I guess when we advocate for some of these things that could have winners and losers, I think part of the advocacy has to be a recognition of that and a recognition that in order, in order for us to have support around the Commonwealth, we have to make the size of the pie bigger for those things.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So my question's about, thank you very much for the amendment having to do with environmental sustainability, renewable energy. I think it's one of the other documents that we have?
Correct.
Thank you. And that's great, I just had a few questions about it. One, is this basically the language that the county has adopted as well?
In essence, the, the county's legislative program's set up a little differently than yours, so the first sentence is kind of their preamble, and then the second sentence is the, the beginning header to another section that has about six or seven specifics listed. So your, your program tends to be more general, and then the specifics are the details that are worked out in terms of proposing legislation. So I think that kind of this, this format fits, but yes, this language is pretty much verbatim from what the county has in their program.
Okay, great, thank you. So my next question's going to be, I think, a little bit like what, what Megan was talking about, which is, this is very general, and I, I do know from, you know, hearing from advocates, Sierra Club folks, you know, who advocate every year for specific legislation, that there is some actual legislation coming. Now, I know at this point, you look at the General Assembly, I, and, I mean, I think I've learned this, too, it's such a moving target. I mean, it's, it's a carnival of moving targets, right? And so you don't know exactly what legislation is still going to be alive in a month or a month and a half, but it's my understanding that there is something called the Solar Freedom Bill, which is a comprehensive piece of legislation. I, I don't know if it came up last year, if it's brand new this year, but it seems to have in it a lot of the things that we want and that the county wants. It's my understanding the county has specifically endorsed this or supported it, and maybe VACO as well. So how much, so what would you recommend we do about a, a piece of legislation like that, which is comprehensive and seems to cover what we need and has a lot of support? Should we put that specifically in our program, or should we, as school board members, be bringing it up with our legislators now?
Well, in, in terms of the way we use the legislative program, just in general, and this is true for any piece of legislation, not just the one that you're referencing, is the language that's in the legislative program helps to provide guidance as to how to look at a piece, a specific piece of legislation like what you're suggesting. So kind of the first step is for the board to decide whether or not it wants to take a position on the issue, and then to look at the very specific piece of legislation to see, does it fit what the board's advocacy was? Does it do the things that the board wants to? Does it do some of the things the board wants to? Does it do enough of the, what the board wants to? So that's kind of, you know, so the first step is this discussion on the more general principle, and then the second step would be to have that discussion about the specific, you know, House bill, whatever, number it is, and look at it through the lens of the board's position to see if it actually does fulfill what you're looking at. And then that's when, you know, that's when you take the next step of, of starting in on advocacy, of, you know, the, the board actively supporting or, or, you know, testifying on bills and those kinds of things. But it's really that, this is the first step to that consideration of that specific legislation.
Yeah, and, and I guess, so that's the, I also feel a little bit of that frustration when I have delegates and, you know, state senators come to me and say, well, what specifically do you want, you know? And I now have a bill in my hands that's been given to me by the advocates, and it's actually being proposed by Mark Keem, who covers part of the same, part of the county that I do. So it's a natural opportunity for me to advocate for that. I guess I still feel like, just because we're so large and the General Assembly meets, so just, just do so much in the dark, you know, that it's, it's really, it's hard for us to give our delegates and senators specific advice about what we want. If, if you've taken a look at that Solar Freedom Bill, or if you have the time to look at it, could you let us know if that is something that you think fits our legislative priorities and we should be specifically advocating?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And staff, you know, staff, staff would take a look at it in terms of, of potential impacts. So not just the, the lens of the legislative language, but also in terms of the actual practical impacts that it would have.
Okay, thank you. One more question, and this is probably not going to be a popular idea, but looking at our priorities page, going back to that one, and I know we're working really hard to streamline this, but I'm wondering if there's, I'm just going to put that out there, if there's anywhere on this page that we could fit the environmental sustainability priority that we all stated, that we think is really important at a meeting a couple, a month or so ago? And I don't know if it would fit somewhere as a phrase, I was thinking maybe in the third paragraph where we're talking about local control, because that's really what it comes down to, I think, is local control over decisions we make, you know, as a county with how we use our property, how we build our capital improvement program, because I, I think the problem that I've encountered is that our hands are tied by Richmond, whereas if we were in other surrounding states, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, we would be free to do a lot more when it comes to renewable energy in the county than we are because of the General Assembly. So that's just something I'm putting out there. I don't know if there's any way to squeeze a little language in here and not make everybody mad, but that's my request, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Pat, Ilya, followed by Janie and Karen.
Thank you, Mr. McElvin. Welcome back. You know, first of all, I would like to echo the request made by Mr. McElvin to move the last two bullet items to the top. Ms. Malloy?
Mm-hmm.
And then, if possible, if he could consolidate first four bullets under something like a funding, and then maybe even streamlining further of the languages underneath for those four bullet items, so that when legislators see that, oh, this is a funding-related priorities. And in, in that way, probably we can squeeze in more easily the request from Ms. Hines. In that way, having said that, let me, let me go back to the local control of school calendars. We have a school calendar for the next school year already set, correct? Ms. Malloy?
Uh, yeah.
So if this, so when is the last, is this the last legislative session that we can wait until something happens before we make a drastic change to future calendars?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe. One thing, one thing I can share, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, what's been happening is divisions that had the weather waiver, then had Steve Newman put budget language in that allowed those divisions to be grandfathered for years and years and years. I came from such a division. The issue now is whether we could temporarily continue every two years to try to be part of that budget language that basically grandfathers in anybody that has a weather waiver. The big push is still to get a fundamental realignment of the control of the calendar from the state to the locality, instead of having to go back and ask for, and be, be dependent on a legislator to put it into the budget. Is that, is that a true statement, Michael?
Absolutely, and, and the, the, I think the fundamental flaw of relying on that budget language is it's budget language. It can disappear any General Assembly session. It can, you know, the next time the governor proposes a budget, he can leave it out. So that puts you all in a position of having to, you know, kind of project, I, I think your, your next calendar's already, you know, already been set, so you, you have a, a particular timeframe, and if the General Assembly were to come in in January and decide to strip that language out, and you were counting on it being in there, and you had set a calendar, you'd have to go back and actually redo your calendar, because you would have lost the waiver. So I think that's why the, the push to make it a permanent fix is still there. Yes, we have a waiver, and yes, in theory, that waiver is going to continue because of the way things have gone, but that, as I said, could disappear if the bill's patron decides not to, to put it in, or if, if the just General Assembly decides to do something different.
As a follow-up question, Ms. Malloy, that you said the waiver may continue, but the waiver is conditioned upon number of school closing days due to the weather.
Yes, but that waiver can be grandfathered, but because of the language in the budget, essentially the language in the budget says that you, if you have had a weather-related waiver, you will continue to receive that waiver regardless of what your weather has done.
Whether you have a closing, Zona.
Correct, yeah.
And it's always been that way.
It's been that way for almost 10 years. That language has been in the, in the budget for probably eight, nine, 10 years at this point. But again, it's renewed every two years, and the General Assembly does look at the budget every single session, so there's always the chance that that language is going to drop back out of the budget.
Okay, thank you. And, and the next question goes to the funding issues. All your, Ms. Hines asked you about winners and losers, and you said, you know, cost of competing may, you know, create winners and losers, but all the three bullet items may not. Is that, is that fair understanding?
Cost, cost of competing is really a matter of, it's more, there are only particular jurisdictions that benefit from it. The, the other jurisdictions don't lose, they just don't get any of the funding. So it's not, they're, they're.
So my question is this, if, if, from governor's perspective, governor may, or even legislators, they may set aside certain amount of money for K through 12, public education. So in that sense, in that sense, any change within there could create losers and winners?
That assumes the pie stays the same size. That assumes.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean.
Right, that, so if you make the assumption that there is a finite amount of money that's allocated for education, and they decide to change their mind and move it from one program to cost of competing, then yes, that would create winners and losers.
I'm going to have to assume that, I'm going to have to say, even though amount, that size of pie may change from year to year, but, but it's going to be a finite amount of money for K through 12, education for a given year, because I don't, I don't think, I don't think, you know, unless governor is going, you know, legislators or governor is taking money out of some other pockets to put into K through 12.
It, it's, it's either that, or it could be just in terms of, in terms of additional revenues, and they prioritize the revenues in one direction as opposed to another. But that's, I, that's just the fundamental legislative process, is that there's always going to be multiple claims on exactly the same revenue streams, and it's a matter of what decisions the governor and the General Assembly make in terms of where that revenue is allocated. So this is, this is essentially your way of making a claim on, as part of this process, as part of this discussion about where the state is going to place its priorities, these are the things that you think are among the most important places for the state to be placing those priorities.
Okay, thank you. And, and lastly, I am going to support the request from my colleague from Bradock District about maybe putting some dollar figures on those funding items, and maybe even help the board members as well.
Okay. Okay, great. Next, we have Janie, followed by Karen and Daya.
Okay, first of all, thank you very much, Michael. Every year, I think we always get better and better at trying to have our voice heard, and I know the rest of the school divisions throughout Virginia depend on your work. And so I want to congratulate you every year, and I know it's just, it is amazing what you all accomplish in such a short period of time, and I'm sure you clone yourself at least three times for every 7:30 a.m. committee meeting, so thank you very much. All right, I pretty much agree with everything everybody has said so far. In the funding pieces, on the first bullet, clearly huge concern about mental health throughout the state, and everybody that's talked about safety and security and everything else, it comes down to, we need mental health supports, psychologists, social workers. So I think some specificity in, in where we're going, that that would help, and I would think that would be a net gain for everybody. The other, the other two areas, and I don't know exactly where we, how we do this, is technology support within schools, so that, I mean, everybody, you know, we, we need to be able to use modern pen and paper, which is the appropriate use of technology in the classroom for instruction. So the question is, within that, we already do the best that we can for support within schools and then within classrooms, so I'm assuming that that, however that position is used or funded, that, that would also be considered as releasing them from the cap? Is that a position?
Actually, actually, I, off the top of my head, I don't know, because there are, there are different types of instruct.
I know, I know, that's what I was wondering.
There are different types of technology positions. Some are more technology back office focused, and some are more integrating technology into the classroom focused. And so I think that there is a distinction between those two different types of, of positions.
Right, because as I'm out in schools, as we're going forward, the, again, to make sure that we have the appropriate use of technology in classrooms, that kind of direct support becomes more and more important as we go down this, this road. And then the other one is, as we are very proud of our Project Momentum, and that is direct support in classrooms, it's, it is embedded professional development and all the rest of that. And I don't know if any of that comes under direct support in classrooms and schools. Does it? How we are, how we are reallocating positions that at one point would have been considered, you know, central office support, and yet part of our success with Project Momentum is the infusion of that into classrooms.
I.
I just don't know, that's my question.
And, and I'm not, I'm not sure that I know either in terms of that difference between being a central office versus a school-based. In terms of how the support cap works, I think it's less dependent on that and more dependent on kind of how the positions themselves are classified. So a school psychologist, whether they're in the central office, you know, whether they're kind of in the central office doing support or in a classroom, would probably still all be considered a school psychologist and all be considered as part of the positions that are under that, that support position cap. So I'm not sure that the distinction between school-based and not school-based helps, or really, really plays into it as, as much as the actual job titles themselves.
Right.
Well, we can look in that a little bit further in terms of the specific positions, because it sounds like you all, for this, for the support cap position, really want to try and drill down and identify a few named positions that are, that, that may be part of the advocacy. Now, I can tell you that the support position cap, it's not here necessarily by act. Now, I can tell you that the support position cap, it's not here necessarily by accident. As part of the House Select Committee discussion of school safety, they did talk about the possibility of removing positions from under the school, from under that support cap, and they talked about it under that umbrella of direct student support. So the psychologists, the social workers, the, the positions that have that direct contact with students may not be traditionally considered instructional, but still has that direct, you know, that, that, that direct nexus to, you know, student well-being overall. So they looked at it through that lens. They didn't, in, in terms of the recommendations that I've seen, and they're, they're sending out their full recommendations on Wednesday, support cap isn't mentioned by name, but they do talk about the need for, again, it's artful legislative language, it's the need for additional resources for positions that deal with student mental health and deal with, with, with student well-being.
Right. Well, anyway, I would imagine that, that we may get some traction on the psychologists and social workers, because there seems to be a recognition everywhere that that, that makes a lot more sense in terms of bringing that out of the cap. But again, I'm thinking just going forward in 21st century learning, and what we are showing improves student achievement. The embedded use of direct support to teachers in classrooms, which is Project Momentum, and again, direct support to teachers who are using technology appropriately in classrooms. I think that those are two areas that, that would help everybody as we go forward, whether or not we get any traction in, in this year's legislation. But I would think that would be the kind of language, because I know we are presenting on Project Momentum everywhere, and so that we can show support for everything. And I agree with Ms. Hines in whatever language the Board of Supervisors are, are using to support renewable energy. We have to be careful not to go so far that we get cut off at the knees by the minute we stand up. But being able to partner with the Board of Supervisors will help a whole lot, because a lot of that going forward is going to depend on their I guess the other question is, is the other thing that I'm reading is clearly a lot of support for CTE and dual enrollment and all the rest of that. Do we, is that embedded enough in what we're doing? Because again, those are things that I'm seeing statewide. Everybody is looking for-
In terms, I, on Thursday, I did, I did highlight that there were some additions to the program itself.
Yes.
Dealing with dual enrollment, kind of clarifying your, and, and expanding a little bit on your existing position on dual enrollment. So the issue of whether there should be a uniform statewide tuition, the issue of how, how credentialing is handled across the higher education versus the K-12 education. So that, that language is, is added into your position. And then there's also additional language about kind of the work-based experience and, and expanded and increased opportunities for work-based experiences for students.
Right.
So that's embedded in the, in the language of the program itself, just not part of the, it didn't make it onto the priority page.
And I'm assuming that throughout the state, there were going to be, there will be other legislators who will do the heavy lifting on those areas because they are so obvious, obvious applications throughout the state, and sometimes your more, your rural, your rural needy school divisions will look very hard at that dual enrollment and CTE. So as to whether or not we need to carry the water on that, other than say, yes, we agree. I see some of these other things that you've put in here are the things that, that benefit us the most and that we need to push forward on.
Well, it actually comes back to something that Ms. McLaughlin mentioned in terms of a crosswalk between what other jurisdictions, but also what other organizations are. And Dr. Braybrand and I went to the, the VAS Legislative Conference, and virtually their entire discussion was about workforce development.
Right, exactly.
So they spent a ton of time on the CTE, on, on the CTE issue, on the dual enrollment issue, on other workforce development pieces. So that's something that they've really kind of taken on as champion. And we do look very closely at what all those main organizations. I work with them on a daily basis when I'm in Richmond. We talk in the off-session. There's a group of, you know, 20 or 30 of us that deal with these kinds of issues, and we're in relatively constant communication with each other just to kind of know where, who's prioritizing what, what issues are most important. That communication goes to legislators, that communication goes to the governor. So there's, there's a lot of kind of crosstalk, and it's hopefully talking the same direction among, among all of our, our interested parties in dealing with education issues.
So from our perspective and time spent in the, in the, you know, whirlwind of the legislation, that's more of a, yes, we agree, me too, we're, we agree with everybody on that, on those areas. Great. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, Karen CS, to be followed by Dahlia and Elizabeth.
Thank you, and I'm glad I'm following Ms. Strauss, because I think she teed up some of the concerns I have. One is, and also to piggyback on what Ms. McLaughlin had to say about the prioritization page. So let me start with the prioritization page. I would seriously suggest that we have at each one of these bullets a link, like just a, a reference to where in the priority document they can go for a deeper dive and more prescriptive language. And that way, we can put, I, I do support having environmental language in our capstone paragraphs up top, but then you could actually put a link to where people could look for more detail. Similarly, when we talk about the support positions, I think if we can flesh that out a bit and clearly state about the mental health professionals, the psychologists, social workers, because one of the challenges that we have today, and we are getting support, and there is a groundswell of support coming from the, the legislative group, their task force that has been meeting, they will be coming out with supports for one per 250, as has some of the other organizations. And here in Fairfax County, our challenge is that at the elementary school, we have one per 550 students, and at middle and high, it's a little bit better, but it still exceeds that one per 250. And so getting additional support, we are already investing in it as a result of our safety and security review. We would like to do more, and this provides a bit more intentionality at the state level, which should help us on a broader level. So if we can, and put some crisp numbers, we know that that one per 250 is going to come out in the state report coming out, I guess. I had thought it was coming out last Friday. You're saying it's now coming out on Wednesday?
The report that I was referring to is the one from the House Select Committee, so the one that the, so the one that the, the speaker appointed. They actually don't have, as far as I know, they don't have specific ratios. And I'm, I'm actually glad that you brought up staffing ratios. One of the challenges of a staffing ratio is exactly the situation that you described, which is staffing ratios are used at the state level to drive funding to localities. So one position per 250 students, or one position per thousand students. The, just the mechanics of doing that, that advocacy for a ratio can go from being additional funding for a locality to being a mandate on a locality. And there's a tipping point for pretty much every locality based on what they already do at the local level, where that if, if a ratio goes too far below what you're already doing at a locality-
Taking from something else.
Then, well, and, and, and you're also creating a requirement at the local level to now hire additional staff, and because you're hiring additional staff at the local level, in Fairfax, the cost of that predominantly falls on the locality as opposed to the state. So there comes kind of a cost-benefit tipping point when you talk about specific ratio advocacy that, and, and it's going to vary for every single position because they're staffed differently. So social workers are staffed one way, and nurses are staffed one way, and instructional aides are staffed another way. But putting those specific ratios into code or into the budget, you do run that risk of, of hitting that tipping point where you've gone from, you've now taken what you perceive as a benefit from the state to get additional funding, to now you have another mandate of you have to hire X number of people at X million dollars.
I understand that. We, we need to create that balance in our legislative priorities, and one of the things that I would do is, in addition to the section on, let me pull it out, on the support positions, but right after that is a section on, on safety and security. And I would appreciate more of a direct linkage that safety and security does have a component that requires these support positions, because that's certainly the position that this school board took as a result of the study that we did. And so we want to be more intentional in that. So I would just suggest that. So on the priorities, if we can be a little more intentional, if we can do the linkage to the priorities section, I think that's going to be important. And then on a process piece, one, and this addresses what Ms. Hines was mentioning about air, you know, we've got these wonderful documents, and then we kind of wait, and we're, many of us are approached by our legislators during the session. And what would be helpful, I know that you prepare an update report, but it hasn't been sent to the full board as, as we probably should be getting, in the same way that we have the Braybrand brief, and we have Mr. Foster's briefing. If you would provide that update to everybody on the board so that they know what's happening in Richmond, I think that would help all of us be more effective. And so I would just urge that. The other thing is, on the dual enrollment, if I could just spend a couple of moments, the, I fully support what you have in there, but I would like to see one additional component, which is the flexibility in our classrooms where there is dual enrollment being offered. Because Dr. Braybrand did send something to the state about the ability to have differentiation in a classroom so that there are students that are taking dual enrollment, and there are some students who have not taken dual enrollment but may want that, that course. And the reason I raise this is, in some of our smaller high schools, what has happened is there's not enough of a cohort to be able to offer both the dual enrollment and the honors level or general education course. And then that becomes an equity issue for our students. And so having more, having the intentionality in our, our legislative package, that would be helpful.
And i- if I may ask, just clarifying question, that goes above and beyond the credential issue?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What, what happens, Mr. Malloy, is that the state has come out with something recently that says if you're doing dual enrollment, everybody in that classroom has to be taking that dual enrollment class. Well, if we have a smaller high school, which some of mine are getting smaller, then that class all of a sudden is no longer offered because of not having a cohort. And so I would urge that we have that in it.
Yeah, we can draft that language.
And then on the federal legislative priorities, I really appreciate that we continue to support IDEA and Impact Aid. It's really blurry. I mean, this is a very dense sheet of paper, and I would suggest that we break it out into bullets in the same way that we have done for our state programming, or state priorities.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
And then with the, your new sheet that you have here on the draft legislative potential amendments, I do support the environmental, renewable energy. I think that's very helpful. The Avid elective, I am a little concerned about singling out fine arts as being a substitute for Avid, because Avid is, and fine arts are very different. I would be more supportive of career and technical education or some other area of, because it really is the executive functioning skills that they achieve in Avid, and our fine arts program isn't about executive functioning, and I would be afraid. Huh? Well, different. Okay, okay. I fully support the step up, handle with care. The primary election, I'm fine with. The directory information opt-out, I'm fine with it. I would like one slight modification, because we say local parent-teacher associations, and that seems to be the PTAs. I would actually say associations and organizations, recognizing that we do have PTOs as well. It's just a little bit of a nit. I'm sorry, but I know that there are some that take that seriously. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Next, we have Dahlia and Elizabeth.
Thank you, Michael. I want to echo the, the support for the updated amendments, including the one around sustainability, and if we could include it in the initial language for the priority positions, that would be very helpful. I, I guess I have a couple of questions. It sounds like what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and what I'm hearing from you, is that this is the initial step, and this is what we're passing. And I guess what I want us to figure out is, as we move forward, what is our process? Because I know there's a lot on your plate happening very fast when you're in session and before session. So I guess the next step I would ask would be from our liaison staff and Michael to help us figure out, A, not just how we get the update on legislation that's coming up, but B, you know, are there areas where, where you feel that, you know, a joint letter from the board or direct outreach from the board would be helpful in helping get that legislation passed? Because we now, you know, have worked to figure out how we send advocacy letters. So how can we make best use of that? So if it's not through, I understand if it's not through this program, then I would ask that we figure out our next step of how we can best get us there from now until the General Assembly.
Okay. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is that this, we refer to the General Assembly. Some of this advocacy isn't necessarily for the General Assembly. Some of this advocacy is for the State Board of Education, which meets year-round. Some of this advocacy is for other, you know, is, is maybe legislative, or it may be budget advocacy. And those are two different things. When you get to Richmond, there are, you know, there are bills that are authorizing bills, but then you also have the parallel discussion about what's in the budget. So we can work out the details of each of those. And like, for instance, you know, Ms. Hines had mentioned that there's already legislation dealing with, with solar energy and renewable energy. If you look at, legislation's already been prefilled. There are already bills about Labor Day. There are already bills about some of these things that are already considered parts of your priorities. On Wednesday, when the, when the House Select Committee meets, they're probably going to be talking about taking their prioritization and their issues and turning them into legislation. So we'll have, for a lot of the, the things that you'll probably be interested in, there will be vehicles. Where there aren't vehicles, that's where you have that discussion about, well, do we want to initiate legislation? Do we want to talk about it to a legislator about dropping a bill or about proposing a budget amendment? So we'll, we'll kind of keep an eye on how, how prefiling goes and, and who's interested in, in talking and working with you all on, on legislation, and we can kind of chunk things together as we need to.
Okay, that would be helpful.
And if, if I could just reply to that as well, I think that's an excellent suggestion. And, you know, we typically get the, you know, call to action from the SBA on, on issues that are state, statewide importance. But I think, you know, and, and I can work with Michael on this, is to adopt a similar approach for things particularly that are priority-related. We've done that kind of ad hoc in the past, but we can formalize that.
That would be helpful. Sorry, I have a couple more quick things. I, it's a little hidden in here, and a few things that I haven't heard from my colleagues yet. Number one, I do support the language, and I see norm here, on helping find alternative routes for special ed students to receive verified credits. I know that's something that's very important, and please let us know. And that as well, if there's specific advocacy, whether it's at the state and the Assembly, State Board, all of that. And I appreciate that being in there. The other one is around pre-K. I know, I don't see any updates around funding from, for pre-K. And I know that's, A, something we care about, B, something our seat legislators always ask us when they come to our session. And so I, I know it's in the, our full package is in there. I guess my question is, because that is one area where the funding we receive is so minimal related to our costs. I believe we get around $3,000 to $4,000 for what costs us about $14,000 per student. And every year, we're asked why we're leaving money on the table. And it's not that, yes, we are leaving a fraction of the cost on the table. So I don't know, for me, it feels that unless you feel that it's not going to get any traction and not worth it, but, you know, a worthwhile initiative that where we are spending funds and we would, we in the county would like to expand, has a lot of business community support, how do we really expand our pre-K services? So I don't know, I, I perhaps, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up sooner, would like to consider that being maybe included in one of our, in our priorities- would like to consider that being maybe included in one of our, in our priorities list, whether we're talking about the specific funding, because that is a per pupil funding, I believe, right? It's per pupil. So whether that would be the, the bullet number three, funding support targeted to schools and school divisions. I don't know if we just want to add it there for pre-K funding specifically. I'm not sure if there's another one. I don't see where it would make sense. At the moment, just to not expand what's already, you know, a pretty large priority list. So that would be my advocacy and would like to hear from my board members is can we add the, you know, increased per pupil funding? Unless you have a recommendation, Michael, of a better way to increase that funding.
Well, you actually have, there, there was language in your 2018 priorities that we could just kind of import back in, in terms of, of adding that. A way to get at it without necessarily having to do a specific position on it would be to, at the, at the top, as they have that discussion, as a discussion about state funding for public elementary and secondary education, talk about state funding for public pre-K elementary and secondary education. And just include that as a concept there so you get the, the, the concept into the position without necessarily creating another bullet. But as I said, we do have the language that has been part of past priorities that can be kind of reintroduced into this.
Okay. Yeah, I think as long as it's in there and then also on the follow-up, if you help us understand what is the best way, is there legislation coming? Should be, we be working with the, the state or the superintendent to, to make, to try to increase that at this point?
Okay.
Or with our, you know, I know the chambers have been very supportive as well.
The, the discussions that I've heard more than anything at the state level have been about what they call mixed delivery. So it's that public-private partnership in terms of, of public providers and, and private providers. That's, that's been more the focus at the state level. The funding discussion really has been more along the lines of the jurisdictions that have left the money on the table, is what to do with that funding. Because it's happened for so long that there's essentially an assumption built into the budget that about 25% of what the state allocates won't be used. And that's already taken kind of off the top of the state's allocation because year after year after year jurisdictions haven't, haven't tapped into that full amount. And, you know, as you mentioned, there are reasons for it. It's, it's facilities, that, that's part of it. But that, in, in going again back to the kind of general advocacy for your priorities, it's that mismatch because, between what the state recognizes a cost and what you all actually have to allocate at the local level to, to provide that service. So, you know, the way pre-K funding is done at the state is there's allocation of a little bit more than $6,000. And they cap it at a 50-50 split. So, okay, 3,000 plus comes from the state, 3,000 plus comes from locality. But you can't fund a position, you can't fund a pre-K slot for that $6,000. So even though at the, from the state's perspective, they're saying, well, we're, we're giving you half the money for this. Why, why aren't you taking advantage of it? In reality, it's, you probably have to put up about 75% of the funding for it. So just, and, and we have that conversation with our legislators. So I think that our delegation understands that. But it's, sometimes, exactly. But it's still, you know, it's an easy soundbite to say it's a 50-50 split. Why aren't you taking advantage of it?
But perhaps it's the communication pieces. Can we be more clear about really? Because I don't think all of our legislators see that and they see it as a win and a loss on our side for not using that aid. If we're more clear about how the funding works, is there maybe more of an avenue, optimistically speaking, to find other ways to grab that funding in what we're already doing? I don't know. So maybe that's a, a later discussion, but I would love to see it in our priority.
The most direct way to get at it is, is to advocate for additional per pupil. So take that $6,000 and move it up. So at the same time, I mean, essentially what you're doing is you're saying, okay, well, at the local level, we're putting up $9,000 already. We have all kinds of room to go in terms of if the state were to up its per pupil, our per pupil allocation at the local level, we'd already be covering it.
Right.
So that's, that would be one, one way to get it. That would be one way to get at it.
Okay.
And there have been bills in the last couple of years, they have increased the per pupil amounts. Not by a lot, but they have, as part of the budget process, they have increased those per pupil amounts just by some small increments, but it's at least been discussed.
Okay, yeah. So I would, I would advocate for adding per pupil funding for pre-K. That way we can be very clear and try to get legislation up there. Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth.
So a couple of things. On the, Illyon had mentioned maybe categorizing some of these. I think that that goes to my point, which is a year after year annual request of sort of focusing the, the priorities. And I actually think that that's a good way to do it. Because this sort of is, I think Karen used the word dense, is there's nothing that like sort of draws in, okay, what, what is the focus here? And a lot of them, frankly, a funding heading, a local control heading, you know, that says, look, because it, even if I can't get us down to maybe three, maybe three areas, could potentially say, look, what we want is, you know, you know, more directed funding or targeted funding, better local control and, you know, whatever the third fill in the blank is. So I think that the titles would certainly help in, in terms of consolidating some of the focus. With respect to the Avid conversation, I'm concerned actually even limiting it to fine arts and, and CTE. I think it should just be that we should be able to have a graduation credit in a, in a different direction. And it, because, you know, if we're at individualized education, what works for one student, it could be a fine art. Not likely in terms of executive functioning skills. I mean, it could. But, I mean, if they're struggling in that area already, you're not likely to excel as much in that area. But it could be a performing art. It could be, you know, coding. It could be, there could be all kinds of things that could meet a graduation requirement with Avid. That I, I, I think couching it starts to delimit options rather than open options. So I would not be in favor of, there's no reason to boundary it, I think, in this, in this advocacy. With regard to the calendar, I was just looking up, the last time I did the calculation, there are 132 school divisions. There's two non-school divisions. With 132 school divisions, 50 are, are Labor Day, post-Labor Day. 82, over 62% are pre-Labor Day. And of the ones that are pre-Labor Day, over 50% were before, in the 16, 17 school year, before the 19th of August. I, I mean, it, it's stunning how much earlier the vast majority of the school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia start than do we. And that, that begs or potentially brings to offer, we had at some point done like a, a one-page map of sort of some significant, and I, I think this was Dr. Garza, some significant factors as related to Fairfax County in terms of the number of, you know, the, the, the bar graph that, you know, our number of, I forget what, whatever the, the, the statistic is. The number of special education students we have is more than all of Arlington County or something like that. I think that in order to increase the efficacy of the advocacy, that we need some kind of fact sheet, you know, that has some visual graphics that goes with this to emphasize why some of this is important. You know, when you look at, you know, the, the number of school divisions, you know, over 62% are, are pre-Labor Day start and, and over half of that are much, much earlier. The degree to which that impacts our students and the lack of local control over our calendar negatively impacts our students at the direct hands of the state General Assembly refusing to allow that local control. So our children pay the penalty by virtue of the fact that they refuse to allow us to have local control because by the time those nationally normed exams come along, you know, all, all of those students have had potentially as much as almost a month more in school. And that, I, I, I think there's sometimes an aha moment that goes along with that that, that gets lost in sort of this proliferation of points. And I, I, I have done you the favor of not counting. I don't know if we're at 267 bullets or whatever, but that helps, I think, focus the conversation. And it shows in a very manifest way why local control matters. Why we, we need to have for the benefit of our children, just like, you know, and then you can say, well, you know, all of you, meaning, you know, all, all of the representatives representing the rest of the state, your children benefit by virtue of the fact that these decisions have been made, but they've been done at the peril on the backs of the children in, in Fairfax County and Northern Virginia. So that's a, another point that I have is that there may be some kind of visual fact sheet that goes along with that to help emphasize what some of these statistics are to help, help with the cell. And then on the Impact Aid, on the federal side, on that Impact Aid issue, first of all, this is again, too dense, needs to be broken out. Do we have any idea the number of, what, what is the number of military-connected children again?
About roughly 17,000.
17,000. And that's not 17,000 families.
17,000 students.
Do we have any idea how many of those families are not Virginia residents that are Fairfax County residents? I mean, they live here, but they're not, they don't declare Virginia as...
I don't.
Their state of residency. Is there any way for us to know that? The, the, the point that I'm...
We do not track that.
You don't track that? I wish that we would. I wish that we would find some way because this is a, a double impact issue. Is not only are we not receiving the, the federal Impact Aid for the military-connected students, but a vast majority of those are not going to be Virginia state residents and thus we're not collecting Virginia state tax either. So it's a double...
And the largest commissary in the continental United States is at Fort Belvoir.
And, okay, well, I'm not...
Fails tax.
I'm not, okay, I'm not gonna begrudge those families who are already living, you know, thin to the margin in the most expensive, one of the most expensive counties in the nation. You know, that's, that's a whole different kettle of fish. I'm just talking about the fact that we, we are suffering under a double-edged sword of not only do we fund the rest of the state, you know, we're the, you know, we're the funder by redistributing Fairfax County taxpayers' residence states, you know. So it's not only the local property tax, but that when we get quote unquote 26% of our state, of our budget back from the state, Ms. Corbin Sanders, I'm talking to you, when we get 26% back from the state, those, that's our residents' money just coming back here, but we're only getting 13 cents back on the dollar. Except we're not getting it for the military families either. So, so I, I don't know if there's a way to emphasize that component, but if we don't have any of the statistics, it's a little bit harder to emphasize. But that's a, that's a, you know, that's a different lens to the degree to which we are impacted. And I don't think we talk about that well or ever. But, but it is part of the reason why the emphasis on this is, is so necessary is we're, we're underfunded in that, in that respect. Oh, and then in regards to the environment, you know, the, this is the only, can we go to that one? This is the question I have. I, I don't know what this is at the cost of what? What is this instead of? And the reason, you know, I have concerns about this is the thing that we have that's most significantly in our control to impact our sort of environmental footprint that I've been advocating for years. And Dr. Braybrand, I have not been successful in this. And I wish that we would seriously rethink this. With the largest school bus fleet in the United States of America, putting 18 and a half million miles on our roads, there, there is no reason not to expand into a propane gas fleet. It is the single largest thing that we do on a daily basis that impacts, impacts the environment. And, you know, we, we do some lead building and some, and some green building. I don't know what, how many millions of solar panels it would take to replace, you know, the 18 and a half million miles of impact we put on the roads. And there've been all kinds of reasons given to me as to why we don't go propane. I, I frankly don't buy a lot of them. I, I think it's maybe hard, but it's just because it's changed. And I would much rather emphasize that which is in our control than talk to somebody else and say, you should do something when we have the capacity to do something and we're not. So that's where I am on the environment issue.
Okay, great. So our late arrival, Ms. Evans wants to have a word. Megan's gonna have a quick go back and then we're gonna go to next steps.
Mr. McElveen, if I, if I could real quick, just...
Go ahead.
Probably the most effective thing that I've seen in terms of the, the Labor Day issue is someone took a map of Virginia and drew out the jurisdictions that get Labor Day waivers.
I have it. I can send it to you.
Okay. All right. So you've seen that and basically you draw a line down I-95. And if you're...
It's, it's, it's much smaller than that, actually.
But it, but it's, if you're, if you're kind of west of that, that's where you have the more severe weather. If you're east of that, you have milder weather and that's kind of where the dividing line is. But it's, it's pretty stark in terms of this part of the Commonwealth has it, this part of the Commonwealth does not have it.
I did all of the analysis. I have it for the 2016-17 school year. I've got the spreadsheet on the, on the start dates by district. And I have the map and numbered districts. So I will send that to you.
Okay. I would appreciate it.
Okay, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I had a prior commitment before we changed it to, to 10 o'clock. So I, I do apologize for coming in late. Mr. Malloy, I appreciate you creating the language on Avid that I see up there. So I, I strongly support doing this. I can either make an amendment or if, if the board is interested in just adopting that today, I would be happy for us to do that too and just incorporate it. So I, you know, I, I believe that that's an important piece of advocacy for us and I believe that's something that we can move forward. Could, I see the language on handle with care. And I also think that this is, I certainly strongly support doing this. I think this is something where we can move forward. Delegate Corey is, is already working on legislation to, to do this, to, to enable this to happen. So I would hope that we could support her and, and her colleagues in, in moving this forward. So I don't know, Mr. McElveen, were you planning to get a sense of the board on, on these two issues before we move forward? Or did you want me to offer an amendment at the board table on it?
Michael, what do you think works best?
Well, I was actually gonna ask in, in terms of, so going to the document that has the five positions, the, the five that are here, I think I've heard in, in terms of general consensus, at least, at least not pushback on at least three of the five. Not as much discussion on the primary election date. The one thing that I didn't talk about with the primary election date, ties back into Labor Day, is moving the primary election date is helpful in jurisdictions that can start before Labor Day, but it may not have any sort of impact if you're required to start after Labor Day because you may still be in school as of that third week in, in June. So it kind of has a ver, potentially has a variable impact in, in terms of efficacy. But, so as I was saying, for number one, environmental sustainability, step up handle with care, primary election date, and the directory information opt-out with the suggestion from Ms. Corbin Sanders... from Ms. Corbett Sanders on adding organizations, so a little tweak in the language, those four seemed like there was kind of board consensus to move forward with. It was the Abbott elective that I think there was still some kind of concern and discussion about, in terms of the discussion that you had missed, particularly related to, I guess it was fine arts, using that as a substitute. Now, the specific advocacy here, the reason that fine arts and career and technical education are mentioned in the same breath is because there is a graduation requirement that literally is, a student can take a credit in either fine arts or in career or technical education in order to fulfill that graduation requirement. It's not an either-or. So I think that's why you kind of conflate the two, the fine art and the CTE piece of it.
And my advocacy would be to get a sense of the board today. I mean, I strongly support this Abbott language. I've had that advocacy at my schools. Abbott is a great course, and it does help students move forward in careers, you know, either in careers or to learn about college readiness. So I think it would be either a, I think one of the terms they've used is a practical art, you know, so certainly the Abbott elective is a career or a fine art or a practical art. So I don't know how you want to approach this, Mr. McAlveen. I guess I would suggest we get a sense of the board today on this, and if there's agreement on it, then we can, I guess, incorporate it into the legislative program before we vote on it finally in two weeks.
So Ms. Evans, and I'm speaking on behalf of not only myself, but Ms. Darnak Kofax. The concern is that there are multiple electives that are built into our high school graduation requirements, and so just singling out fine arts or career and technical education could have a negative impact on our staffing of those areas, whereas if it were an elective course for the currently required graduation requirements, then, you know, it might be that some of the other non-core four would be a more appropriate use in giving the flexibility to families and students to determine whether it's either fine arts or career and technical education, or some other course that does not contribute to their, to the core four.
So I guess I'm not understanding your advocacy on this, then?
Deleting the reference to what the required graduation...
Just that it would be considered a credit for graduation without specific...
An elective credit, right.
But it currently is an elective credit, correct? So that wouldn't change anything?
Towards graduation.
Yes, it would be designated as an elective credit that would count toward graduation.
But isn't that what happens now?
No.
Isn't that what happens now?
I'm seeing head nods over there.
Let's say what it is. Let's let them know.
Yeah.
It is an elective credit now, so...
So that wouldn't change anything?
No, it wouldn't change anything. And starting with this year's ninth graders, the graduation requirement that most closely aligns to what Ms. Evans is talking about is students are required to take two credits in world language, fine arts, or career and technical education, with one of those credits being required either in fine arts or in CTE.
So as much as you, you know, if you have a student who may be proficient in his second language already, then it might be more appropriate for them to use one of their world language credits towards this versus restricting it to fine arts or career and technical education. And so I guess my concern is, is that we are being very specific about where it can be counted versus saying, okay, let's have it, the flexibility of an elective towards one of their credits, or as if it's already an elective credit, then let it go from there. But I don't want to see us prioritizing or deprioritizing the fine arts or career and technical education. That's my concern.
And so I don't see us as deprioritizing it. I see us as opening up this course, which is a fabulous course, to serve toward graduation in these two areas, as opposed to, from what I understand, if it's simply stated as an elective, it currently is an elective toward graduation, so that simply wouldn't change the current situation.
Mr. McAlveen, as a procedural matter, I don't think there is enough consensus on this to be included.
Okay, that's fine. Then I will...
You can bring it as an amendment.
In that case, I will bring it as an amendment, and I will.
And just as an overarching thing on all of these, to answer your question, I think the best way to handle this is that folks should bring these as amendments. I think it is useful to have that conversation at the board table, particularly on things like climate, which the community needs to know we're focusing on that.
Well, so I will plan to bring that amendment to the board table, and we can discuss it there. On the handle with care, I do think we need to broaden this language. I'll also plan to bring this up as an amendment, because I do think that that's an important piece of advocacy. I would like to see us broaden that to include all types of trauma. There might be trauma that is not actually a crime. Seeing your parent deported, for example, isn't witnessing a crime, but it certainly is traumatic. So I would like for us to open that up to allow authorities to interact with the school system for all types of trauma that children may endure. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Karen has a two-finger on this, then I'll give Megan her go back, and then we're going to go to the next step.
I just wanted to speak to the language with respect to handle with care. I would caution us with respect to this specific language as a potential victim or witness of a crime. When the language that you give to schools can oftentimes stigmatize a child, and so I would elect for broader language as opposed to specifically something that happened, because it just creates a buzz, and everybody's trying to figure out what's going on, and I think that basically they need to know this is a child that needs to be dealt with in a more sensitive manner, and the least we can say with respect to details is in the best interest of the child. If I need to work with Ms. Sandy, I'm happy to do that, but I would object to the language as written.
Okay, Megan? Oh, she disappeared.
So the reason I wanted the go back is I will be like Ms. Evans, wanting to have some sort of amendment for all of you to consider, and I'd sent you some language on the 2017 Virginia Board of Education recommendation related to social workers, psychologists, and school nurses. And I do want to confer with Mr. Malloy first, though, because obviously we need to think about how to couch that in a way that the concern is while we would want them recognized from support position to SOQs, then there's also the local funding challenge that will come down to it. So I'll work with him on that language, but I did want to, A, make you all aware that the Virginia Board of Education 2017 policy, or their 2017 position specifically said how important this is, that we have more effective staffing funding for those three areas. But what I wanted to draw or raise attention to is on page 14 of our legislative program under Y, the letter Y, student safety, bullet number two. It says, "The Fairfax County School Board supports state funding sufficient to support at least one uniformed SRO in each middle school and high school in the Commonwealth." So I'm using today's work session to draw your attention that we're putting that in our legislative program as a priority and a position, but we don't say something more specifically about, again, school, social workers, psychologists, and nurses in our schools. I also am a little worried and would like staff to explain, why are we saying at least one SRO in each middle school and high school? Because to my knowledge, this board's never said we'd want at least one. I think we're cognizant of the argument to having one in our middle school and high school, but at least one is saying, you might have more than one SRO in a building, and I don't know, that isn't necessarily, again, we have a Fairfax County police department that can get to our schools within minutes. If you have a uniformed officer in our building, why are we going to put potentially more than one SRO in each building?
I think Jeff is going to speak to this.
Yeah, sorry. The reason why we've had this discussion is the timing and duration, mostly at the secondary level. We've had it at the board level about the duration of coverage. And when it says at least one, because of length of eight hours, whereas our high schools and secondaries are usually open from 7:30 or more until perhaps 11 o'clock in the evening. There was discussion at one time with this body, it may not be these exact members, but it was about how we could provide coverage. So it was at least one. The desire was if we could have more than one at the secondary level, it would help alleviate coverage throughout the period of time that the facilities open.
So I would just say that this is the greatest challenge whenever you have legislative language. Mr. Malloy knows this probably better than anybody sitting at this table. That also can signal that we believe we should just be staffing two or more at a time, that you could have two or more staff at the same time, because that's not, the language isn't specific enough to say in order to cover beyond an eight-hour day. So I just, at a very macro level, I struggle with what this is because we are in an educational setting. We know we are having children with greater need. We know that we're trying to educate the whole child, and yet we have very specific language about SROs, but not specific language about social workers, psychologists, and school nurses. And that's my macro level, you know, comment in preparation of when you see my amendment coming forward, I hope you'll just at least be mindful. If we're going to be this targeted upon SROs, I would hope we would be as committed to social workers, psychologists, and school nurses. I also just wanted to say that I appreciate all the potential amendments, and that Mr. McAlveen has suggested that they should all come to the table, even though some of them have strong consensus. I think it is good for the public to see some of these areas of interest. I would say that in terms of what will be listed as a priority versus what's listed in the program, the legislative program, Mr. Malloy, when you drafted these five that are here, you put where they can be put under each specific section, I would say, especially because these are highly specific, and frankly, I think some of the best language we've got, because, and I want to thank my colleagues who've done this, because you are being very intentional with your language, and this is how our legislators know what it is we're asking for. And I would like to see more of this done with our legislative program in general. But I do hope that when we go to next steps, we will talk about how we make more clear what our priorities are, what is the financial impact, and that is both at the state level and the federal level. And as Ms. Corbett Sanders had said, even looking at the draft page that Mr. Malloy created on the federal priority position, that should be in bullets, not narrative, and we should absolutely have staff identify what are the cost impacts to our division on an annual level. And that was something Mr. Malloy and I talked about, was how do we capture for the public and for our elected officials? We're talking about substantial money here on a given basis, so I appreciate Dr. Brabran also echoing that, and I know we'll probably talk about that in next steps.
Okay, great. Segue. Ms. Mulberg, please present us with our list. Okay, so let's go through these. First, let's see, the first three are from Megan. Look at those and make sure that captures what you want. Number two was actually mine, so, McAlveen.
Yeah, I don't think number one captures what I was saying. I think maybe Mr. Moon's captures it better, if you have it further down, where he just said, let's, on our priorities, you know, consolidate them under the topic headers. Mine is just supposed to be, I want more descriptive language for those six priorities. Yeah, just keep that one. You can just, yeah, just keep it there and just delete one.
Okay, okay, we'll go down the list. Move two priorities to the top of the page, everyone who supports that, that's just the non-financial ones. Okay, yes, we have support. Revised priorities to be more specific and descriptive, support for that. Okay. Number three, add links to more detailed information to prioritize list. Okay, good. Number four, add the support for the recommendation regarding...
Yeah, that can be removed because I'm going to bring it as an amendment.
Okay, great. Okay, consolidate the topics under headings, as we've done in the past, support for that, yes. Number five, add a phrase about, actually, Pat has sent us the revised amendment language, right?
Actually, see, this is separate. I want to offer an amendment to add the language that Michael suggested in the changes page that he gave us, the draft changes page for the whole document. This is more to add a phrase on our priorities page, somewhere in there that highlights our commitment to environmental sustainability, renewable energy. And I would kind of leave it up to Michael to throw a few words somewhere on that page. If, I mean, are you okay with that?
What you're, just to clarify, you're proposing that this language not only be added to the program itself, but also be added to the priority positions of the board, so the one-pager, which is now going to be more than one page because we won't be able to get all the data and everything on to it. But am I understanding that you want it in both places?
Yes.
But to be clear, you want a standalone priority, or can it just be in the language?
You know, it's up to, I don't think it needs a standalone priority, but you're the author of that page, Michael, so I would leave that up to you. I guess the question is, I'm bringing an amendment for the actual change, the actual addition in the document. Do you feel like I need to also bring an amendment to put it on?
No, no, we can work on it and bring that. Okay, okay, I assume that has support.
Mr. McAlveen, I just want, I'm absolutely in favor of anything we can do on green energy and sustainability, but I just want to understand what we're doing here, because obviously a lot of us have also talked about the fact that we want with intentionality this focus on mental health supports in our public schools. So are we going to add that into this summary first page? Because to me, how can we be putting green energy as a stated priority on this page, but we're not going to do something about mental health supports, which we actually know is coming from the, even the General Assembly Sump Committee review on school safety? So I'm just trying to figure out...
Yeah, I mean, my preference is not to bring, is not to expand this list more than what we have, if not.
So I'm happy, because it is a little bit odd, it's a little bit cart before the horse, to put it in our priorities when we haven't yet added it to the program. So I'm happy to offer it as an amendment to our priorities page, and then, you know, that way we can talk about it all together.
I like that, Ms. Heinz, because I'll probably bring one, too, that, again, even if it's just a phrase that just puts those two areas that we want to make sure are captured, they don't have to be a bullet, they can just be in the narrative above about what we're committed to.
Okay, so we'll take that off. Okay, thanks. Number, new number five, add request for safety, security assessment to bullet regarding...
This is, this was my suggestion of adding specifically the psychology and social worker supports in the safety and security bullets, because it's directly linked, and that's where we were coming from, where the state committee is coming from. And so it was being more intentional and including those staff members. And now, a little later, after I had said that, Ms. McLaughlin said that she wants to do an amendment on this. So the question is, do we need an amendment, or are you willing to, I mean, she wants an amendment, but I'm pretty adamant that we need to be very clear in that section that our social workers and psychologists contribute to the safety and security.
Well, I think in terms of the language that you have right now on the support cap, and I thought that's what this discussion was kind of about, just, there's generic language in there, talking about positions related to direct student services, that should be amended to be... That should be amended to be more.
Include mental health.
To include student health and mental health personnel such as, and so to, to expand it out so you're being more specific and more explicit about the specific types of positions. That's, we can incorporate that in terms of that, that particular priority.
Excellent. I think that's important. So if people are comfortable with that.
Just from clarity though, I, I do think what you've proposed, Mr. Malloy, would be great, but in that number five, what I also think within the legislative program under that section of student safety, we, we, right. What I'm, I thought what you're saying, Ms. Corbett Sanders, is that there has been a recommendation coming out of the General Assembly Task Force on that?
The recommendation coming out of the General Assembly Task Force mirrors what we did as part of our safety and security review. Because what happened was they came and met with us and then we shared with them the results of the safety and security, and that's how it's being integrated into their program. But given that it's, we know it's coming, we need to put a stake in the ground in saying this is, we believe this is important.
Correct.
And so that's why I'm asking for the intentionality of that language in the safety and security.
I, I understand, but I want just to be clear that so that will end up being an amendment to the language.
Well, that's what I was asking is whether it needed to be an, when, we weren't talking about amendments per se. When I raised this, I said, can we just add this? And now the question is, do we need it as an amendment or can you just go ahead and add it in?
Well, if, can we pull up the, the full document that has all of the legislative language? And I'm looking specifically on page 13. If you go to page 13, this is actually under your existing student health and wellness position. If you go up, let's see, position, page 13, so it's down, down one more, down one more. Okay, right there. The Fairfax County School Board, this is existing language in your program, which you've already adopted. So the Fairfax County School Board supports significantly increased state resources devoted to programs and staffing, including school psychologists, school nurses, school counselors, and school social workers to help school divisions serve the increasing. And then when you go down, school health and wellness needs of our student population and other things, but student safety is not specifically mentioned there. If you were to add, that would be the place in terms of the full program. I think you, if you add student, something about student safety to that listing of why you're advocating for those positions, I think that would give you the, the connection between the two pieces.
I'm happy to see student safety in that bullet, but I also think we need a set, a, a complimentary bullet under the safety, the student safety. And the reason I say that is that you have different policymakers dealing with different pieces of this. So when they pick up our document, they may not go and read that section, they will only read student safety. And so therefore it's that, you know, cross referencing.
Yeah. And, and I think that that would more, I mean, to my mind would really, quite frankly, be more of an editorial change. It wouldn't be a change in your position necessarily because you're already advocating for those positions. It's just a matter of where it's located. So that's, that's something that we can include as part of the final document without having to do a, a separate amendment.
Okay, all those in favor of that?
Hold on, Mr. McElveen. The one, I know you, I know, but one of the things we talked about is if we're going to be adding in that this is based on Fairfax County School's safety evaluation and the General Assembly's recommendation. Because it's just our voices of 12 is different from saying it comes from two different recommendations. Mr. Malloy can just add that in, correct? These are based on two different recommendations.
I actually think we need to have it as our recommendation and not something that's coming from a state-level organization because these are our priorities. And we actually get more bang for the buck to be able to say, hey, not only do we advocate for this, but when we do coalition building, then we have a coalition that's broader than who we're referencing in this document. That's at least how I would approach it.
All those in favor of that? Great. Next one. Okay, number six, include full board and regular, so I have actually captured that in the next one under Dahlia's name, Karen, if that's okay. So, oh wait, no, sorry, those are separate. Never mind.
Actually, they should be combined. It's really the two you.
Yeah.
It's process.
It, it is process, and I actually thought that last year we had solved that, that you are, because we do, during the General Assembly session, we send out a Friday briefing, kind of giving a lay of the land of where everything is. And then we also do kind of a comprehensive listing of all the pieces of legislation that we have, where we've been tracking and send those out in terms of where they are in the legislative process. If board members are not receiving that, we will, we'll correct that immediately. You all should have been in receiving that. We've, and we've done those, those, those reports on every Friday during the General Assembly session for as long as I've been in this office, so.
So it began, beginning late last year, they began sending it to it.
This is a more deliberate way of pulling it all together and having a call to action. And I think we're all in the same boat on this.
Yeah, okay. Those in favor of this?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And number seven, include requests to include flexibility in classrooms to offer dual enrollment and state priorities. Okay.
Michael, that's the mixed classes is the word that's being used in Richmond, just for you to know when you do the writing.
Yeah, well, we'll add that language to the, the proposed change.
Okay, number eight, add bullet.
I sent out language to my colleagues and Michael rather than adding, just incorporating into the paragraph and into one of the bullets. So if people have comments on that. I'm not 100% clear for what it processes. I sent it out in case it was an amendment, but.
I, I, yeah, I mean, I think it's fairly self-explanatory and because we've included that in priority language before, we can just proceed with that. If people have concerns, let me or Michael know.
Okay.
Okay. Break federal bullets into bullets, priorities into bullets on state page, so.
Yeah.
So talked about adding dollar values where applicable.
Right.
So ju, just to let you know, in terms of what kind of chicken scratch I have up here, essentially what I will end up doing is I will take and have, like there is for the state position, there will be a generic preamble about funding and flexibility, and then there will be specific information about ImpactAid and about IDEA, which are really the two biggest, in, in terms of bang for the buck and in terms of federal impact, those would be the two by far largest dollar figure proposals that you could make. So I'll make sure that each one of those has kind of its separate bullet.
Okay, all those in favor of that? Yes. Karen?
Can I also ask on that federal page that we, we're going to bulletize it, but I think it would also be helpful to have an asterisk that says, when something comes up at the federal level that is not specific here, but we've addressed it in our state package, that we will refer to the state priority. So for example, if something comes up that we have not anticipated, but we've already addressed it at the state level, we want that consistency.
Okay. That, that's typically how we've handled, because the, the federal positions are kind of part and parcel of the entirety of the legislative package. That's how it's been handled in the past and that's how we would continue to handle it.
I understand we would, but I just, for clarity to people that look at our policy, that it, it has that nice little bow on it.
Yep.
Okay, number 10, add, and organizations after PTA's in the, in the directory information opt-out bullet. Those in favor of that? Okay, great. And last but not least, provide visual fact sheet to illustrate impact of requests. Can you explain?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's basically just kind of in terms of the advocacy with, so it's, it's the translation of the legislative position to actual proposals. It's the backup that we use for it. So like the map about the, about.
Okay, great.
Calendar.
All those in favor? Okay.
And just, just so you know, I just updated it for the 2017-18, and there are actually, there are three fewer schools now post-Labor Day, school systems. So now it's only 47 out of 132 plus two, 134.
Okay, with that call to action, we will end, and I'm turning it over to Janie.
Ms. McElveen.
Yes, yes.
You know, but I'm sure if you let me do this, I would like to ask, you know, my board members to submit their amendments as soon as possible. Many of us are going to Williamsburg this Wednesday, and our next meeting is on Monday. And I would like to see all these amendments posted before we go down to Williamsburg.
Okay.
Mr. Moon, are you suggesting that we have the posting no later than Wednesday?
No later than Wednesday.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, we need a quick break in the video, and Janie's going to do budget.